Okay, well, I'd just like to say welcome to everybody and those that are watching live stream, we're having our monthly work session tonight via live stream versus Google Meet. And so this time we'll just turn it over to Dr. Nolte and continue on with the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Francis, members of the board and those who are listening. On the public side, we have a number of work session items to discuss tonight that should bring the board and those listening up to speed as well as give the board an opportunity to give us some feedback and direction on some items. Our first item is an update from Mr. Hines on state emergency sick leave.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you know, back in early April, the State Board of Education approved state emergency sick leave for employees basically for three reasons. One would be underlying health conditions which they would work from home or take advantage of the state emergency sick leave, work remotely, or do the sick leave. And childcare was the second reason, and the third reason would be elder care, taking care of grandparents, parents, that sort of thing. So they made that retroactive back to March 16th when schools were closed. And we did that through April and then the State Board of Education came back again last week and extended that through May 30th. So the same three reasons would apply and the same type of leave applies to the same folks who are currently utilizing that leave. So Dr. Nolte wanted me to talk to you a little bit about how many people we have doing each. As you know, our teachers are working remotely. All of our administrators are still coming into the buildings and supervising and overseeing what's happening in the actual buildings and also the online instruction, that sort of thing. Most of our clerical are still coming in the buildings and working with the public and with our employees. So currently we have 37 classified employees working remotely and that could be either a teacher assistant or a clerical. We have a couple of them are custodians. They're not working from home, but they are taking advantage of the sick leave. So 37 classified working remotely. And we have 28 classified employees who are taking advantage of the state emergency sick leave. That generally requires a doctor's note unless you are 65 or older, which automatically qualifies you for that leave if you choose to take advantage of it. So I was telling Dr. Nolte earlier today, we have between 5 and 600 classified employees, depending on what time of year you count them, whether you count part-time, full-time, temporary, you know, there's lots of ways to look at that. But right now, out of close to 600 employees, we have 65 who are either working remotely or are on the state emergency sick leave. So the overwhelming majority are still coming into the buildings and that sort of thing. The folks that are on, working remotely or on state emergency sick leave have very valid reasons for that and have been, those have been checked and, and we appreciate them helping us every way they can. Great, you know, kudos to all of our employees for what a great job they've done through this whole thing and, and everyone keeps saying that and rightfully so. What a fantastic job. So, so that's sort of the update. If, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Mr. Hines, this is Jim Francis. I do have a question. How is this affecting their pay? Is, is there a different pay scale for that leave or are they still drawing, you know, same pay or how does that work?
Good question, Mr. Francis. The, the state emergency sick leave is at full pay at the number of hours that they were working when we shut down. So if they're a 40-hour employee, if they're a teacher assistant, it's 37 and a half hours, which is their normal hours. If they were a temporary employee, they can also take advantage of that. And what you do is you take the average of hours that they worked, the weeks they were working, and they get paid that average. But the state emergency sick leave is full pay at full hours. Now, that's been confused a little bit with some folks with the federal leave that was given by the federal government, which pays two-thirds salary for childcare or elder care. And it pays full salary after 10 days of using their own leave, after 12 weeks for actual COVID-19 illness. But we have not had to utilize the federal leave yet. The state has, has extended a large amount of the state emergency sick leave, which has covered all of our employees so far. So, so they've all been paid at full pay for full hours up to this point.
Okay, one more question. I know we gave, we had some extra money from the state and we, you know, did increase some of the, the pay for those people, the people that are at home. Are they getting that increase as well or just the people coming in and working?
It's, it's just the people coming into the buildings and working, you know, in the child nutrition, custodial, and bus drivers. The ones at home do not receive that extra pay.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And clerical.
And clerical, yes, yes, clerical that's in the building.
Other questions for Mr. Hines?
Good job.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hines. He has done a very good job answering questions. Are there other questions for him before we move down the agenda? He's been a rather busy fellow, helping people understand the difference, differences in all of the new regulations coming through. Okay, well, we can always come back. It's a work session, so we can go back and forth. I have a couple updates on a couple items and then Dr. Putnam and Mrs. Barker have some also before we want to go into a closed session. I've had one thing that might come to your attention. We've had just a couple, less than a handful, I'd say, more than, more than two, but just a handful of, of requests from parents, from students who have always done very well academically, and they are requesting a retention. I have listened to many of the state webinar regarding the pandemic. I've also had a couple statewide meetings with state superintendents. I had one of those early this morning, started at 7:30 and then I've met with regional superintendents. We meet weekly. And the initial, just if this comes to your attention, the initial promotion-retention meeting is always made by the principal. That's public school law. I happen to have memorized that law when I was a principal, 115C, 288A, but they would make that decision. Promotion or retention can be appealed to the superintendent and if I receive any of those, we will certainly give that a lot of due diligence and consideration. We'll look at academic performance history. But I would probably not be likely, I'm talking in very general terms because you'd want to look at each one of them individually, but I would likely to overturn a promotion decision for a student who has done well academically for many, many years. That's not in line with our directions from the governor, from the State Board of Education, from the Department of Public Instruction. And typically, students who have done well throughout their career, they have missed instruction, as has everyone else, but they would also be very likely to, to catch up and maybe catch up even quicker than others who've missed some of that direct face-to-face instruction. So just in case that comes across your radar, that is out there, not many of those requests, but a couple. Are there any, any questions about that? Okay, great. Well, we have had several calendar issues come up and I have talked on the telephone when I have made decisions around those things that you all need to know about. And the state just recently passed State General Assembly and the governor signed some new calendar legislation. And so I want to spend a little bit of time talking about the end of this year's calendar. And Kim Guffey is going to pull up for us, hopefully. If you're on video, you should see the Haywood County Schools' end-of-year calendar for the current year. There it is. Can you, can you make that larger? There you go. Very good. That's probably good right there. Scroll up just a little bit, Ms. Kim, so I can, so we can see the bottom of that. So we were directed under new state law just recently passed in May that we would get a waiver on this year's instructional hours if we went to the end of the student calendar as approved by the board and submitted to the state originally. And so when we did that, well, I think we approved it last December or January, December, Jenny says, she's sitting here. Our last student day before we had snow or anything else was May the 29th. And that's, I think, what I had mentioned to people who had asked me about that. So we would like to put on Monday's agenda for you all to consider for approval that remote learning for all of the schools except the Early College, we'll talk about them in just a moment, to end on the 29th. The days they're coded in purple, June 1st through 8th, would be, they, those are work days. Those are required for 10, 11, and 12-month employees. And we would use those as days to do all of our end-of-year activities that we're required to do. Unfortunately, this year, we're having to do that through social distancing and in small groups. So those were days when we would collect materials, collect Chromebooks. We might actually start some of this before the first. We would do grading and even in elementary school where we're not giving a grade, the state has directed us to provide feedback to parents about student learning and other things that they have noticed throughout the year. The high school teachers in particular are going to be looking at grades, and Mrs. Barker covered this in a previous meeting, about grades on March 13th or grades that were improved. We need to do all the things around getting students reunited with personal items that they may have left at school. We'll need classrooms prepared for the summer like they're always prepared. So we would need people to come in, a few at a time, who are capable of coming in to clean out rooms and take down bulletin boards, and there are just a number of things that need to be done. Those purple days would look a little different at each school because of school size and because of the grade levels. But what we would ask the principals to do, if you approve this on Monday, would be to communicate with their staff and designate some times on certain days where there were just mandatory things that had to be done, those things I mentioned and some other things. And then the other times would be optional based upon how much teachers and other employees had gotten done. And if, if they wanted to work, they certainly could, or they could take accumulated leave, but there would certainly be some mandatory times. Are there questions about that calendar which applies to, really to all of our schools except the Early College?
Dr. Bill? Chuck Francis, just, so basically whatever calendar we had in place is going to be still in place.
Yes, sir. The, the employee calendar has not changed and
Okay.
I have written a press, a draft press release
Okay.
hopeful that you all will be amenable to these suggestions and vote on those on Monday. That's certainly something you all can consider between now and then. But yes, the, the calendar itself for employees is unaltered. For students, we, with our snow, we're, we're scheduled to finish on the 4th and we would actually finish on the 29th. And we feel like we need that time for all the things I mentioned earlier that the staff needs to do while social distancing, plus some other things.
Okay. Thank you for answering that.
Okay. Any other questions or comments, board, on this proposed request? This is actually just a request to change the last day for students in all of our schools except the Early College. Okay, great. And again, we can come back to any of these. Kim, would you mind to pull up the, this year's Early College calendar? Make it just a little bit larger for us? Okay, board members, you can see that, or if you can't see that, it's fairly easy to describe. It's the very same thing. The employee calendar has not changed for 10 or 11 or 12-month employees. They're all expected to work their days or use accumulated leave. You'll notice that the Early College started earlier, or you'll remember that. They started a week or so earlier. We do our best to match our calendar as closely as the law allows to the college calendar because we literally have hundreds of students taking courses at the college, not just the Early College, but, so the Early College itself starts a week earlier. Their high school classes end a week earlier and the college ends typically early in May. And so, and with Jenny and I talking to Ms. Fox at the Early College, we would like to propose to you on Monday that their last remote learning day be Friday, the 22nd. That's very consistent than what we've done with the other schools, given the start and ending dates. And then the days of the 26th, Tuesday, the 26th through the 29th would be those days where they worked on grades, got Chromebooks back in, materials back in, prepared rooms for the summer, provided feedback for students, all the things that, like other schools, that they would typically, typically be doing on those days. Are there any questions or comments from the board about that proposed request that we would bring forth on Monday? Okay, great. All right. And as always, you guys can call or contact us between now and then. I'll, I'll certainly be in the office all day tomorrow. I don't always sit by the, the landline phone, but you can get me and, as well as Monday, we'll be in. So Ms. Jackson, if you would pull up the calendar for all of the schools except the Early College that we amended literally yesterday and reviewed again this morning after a, a state meeting that included Catherine Joyce, who is a state, a well-known attorney in the state. So in the state's most recent legislative action around calendars, they did two things. Because we have always spent a lot of time working on making sure our students don't lose a lot of instructional time, and because we have done a very good job with remote learning, we don't think that the, the state legislative changes that were made last week or earlier this week actually will actually impact our calendar a lot. They did two things that they're now requiring in future calendars. The first thing that they said was that they wanted us to place five remote learning days in the calendar. This is a legislative requirement. And they wanted to, those to occur on a teacher workday and they wanted those to be within our 1,025 hours. And then I think in an effort to get school systems to have a good, long school year like we do, they also said, we want to make sure you have five instructional days beyond your 1,025 hours. And so when we looked at the calendar that was created by the Calendar Committee and approved by you all last December, all that we really had to do, sorry, that's a safety device on my computer that likes to beep there. All that we really had to do was go into four of the workdays that we already had scheduled and make those remote learning days. So we went into October, the 19th and made it a remote learning day. That is near the end of the first grading period. We felt like that would be a great time for teachers early in the year, and hopefully we'll have a normal year, to say to their students, okay, we've got this remote learning day, remote learning day, here's some things you can do if you're behind, or here's some things you can do that I know will be assessed later. These learning, these remote learning days are very different than the intense remote learning that we have done over the last couple months. These are supplemental. Teachers would still be able to take optional leave on those days and the students and teachers could look at what they did when, when they all returned back to school. And we plan to design these remote learning days in such a way that it wouldn't be too disruptive to parents if they decided to take a long weekend or something like that. So we put, we changed the workday on the 19th of October to a remote learning day. We changed the National Election Day to a remote learning day. That's a day where they don't really like us to have school anyway. We felt like that one could be around the Constitution or elections and things like that. And then with other three days in, in February and March and right before spring break, with the idea that we have snow during some of that period, and we would move those to a snow day. So I know that's a lot of new information. It took us a while to sort through it. And then our, I, we will probably designate the last five days there in May as the five days beyond the 1,025 hours. And that, and we have plenty of cushion there because we've not shortened our instructional time like some other districts have. That's a lot of information and would try to answer some questions for you, and Jenny is here also.
I like the way it's laid out, Dr. Bill.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. Francis. I'll give you a little bit of logic there. We, and this is our theory, and I hope I don't get in trouble with anyone who knows people in other school systems, but I think our, I think our state legislature is trying to send a message to people who've cut some corners. There were certainly some school districts who did not do remote learning very well at all. And the, the legislature and the state school board have asked us to create a remote learning plan, which we're, we're all over that. We've just got to write it down. We started in a hurry and did remote learning and food distribution really, really well. So I think that requirement to put those days in there was not really for us, probably not even for the majority of school districts. So we felt like that was a pretty easy shift for us and we, we promised to be kind and gracious to both students and teachers as we implement this new state policy. And then I think the five days after your required minimum number of hours was to make sure that school systems didn't have the shortest possible year. And there were a few that have done that, well, certainly we have not. We have always been, you know, significantly past our 1,025 hours. So I appreciate that. As a school system that has a waiver, we might use, Jenny was poking me, or trying to poke me in the arm here, I think she got more than six feet away, she, or closer than six feet away, but as a school system with a waiver because of snow, if we needed to, we could add up to five more remote days for snow makeup, no more than that. So everyone in the state will be required to have the five that you see and be, will be required to put them in their original calendar. And then if you have a snow waiver, you may use up to five more. And certainly we won't do that unless we have to because we understand that direct instruction in a classroom with a qualified teacher is better than remote learning in almost every instance.
I've got a question for Dr. Bill.
Yes, sir.
The, the snow remote learning days. So are we going, are our teachers sending home a snow packet in advance, when we have advanced notice of a potential, how, how are you going to work that?
Well, what we hope to do is the days that you see, for example, my phone is trying to answer your question. It picked up on your voice. Let me turn my phone down here. What we plan to do, you see the one there, let's just use this as an example, you see the one there in February. If we were to miss on, earlier in February or in January, we, hopefully we will see that storm coming. We do a really good job of watching the weather and we would say to our teachers, we're anticipating that we might miss for snow sometime during the first week in February. Please be ready to send something home. I had discussions with those superintendents this morning in the state that remote learning does not always equate to a computer. And the type of remote learning that we would want to do would be supplemental. So we would, we would try to send something home that we know the student would be assessed on, something related to reading or grammar for younger children, fifth grade, maybe something around fractions. High school courses and middle school classes have specific things. So we would ask teachers to provide a little bit of remote learning, and I mean a little bit. It's not designed to replicate a six-hour day. It is supplemental in nature and that could really take any reasonable form. And it would certainly be different from kindergarten to third grade and from, you know, fourth grade to sixth grade and from high school course to high school course. The ones that you see there may or may not be used for weather. Any beyond those would have to be used for weather.
Okay.
That's a good question. That question has been asked many times in the last three or four days, hold across the state. Other questions or comments, board members?
Good.
Okay, Kim, if you will pull up the Early College early colleges, as far as we can tell, and asking questions to the state, need to do the same thing. They need to make sure that they have five remote learning days in their calendar and they need to make sure that they have some instructional time after their basic year in the calendar. Their hours of requirements are a little bit different than ours. So they work really hard to mirror the college calendar. They do not want their high school students who are in college to miss college classes. And so you'll see there, the first two who are in college to miss college classes. And so you'll see there, the first two remote learning days are on the 19th and 20th of October. That is the scheduled college fall break. And so that seems like a perfect time. We had workdays there already. That seems like a perfect time to do a little bit of remote learning, in particular for students who may be struggling or need a little extra work. And then they have one on January the 4th, which is a semester transition for them. And that transition is not as cumbersome as it is for Tuscola and Pisgah who have to build, rebuild semester schedules for nearly a thousand students. They also have the one right on Good Friday, right before the scheduled spring break. And then they have one on March the 16th that could be moved based upon weather that impacts the school system or the college. There's a very similar idea. It looks a little different because their schedule's a little different. Any questions or comments on, on that proposal that we would like to bring forth on Monday?
Does anyone have any questions? Looks good.
All right. Thank you, board members. At this time, I'm going to ask Dr. Putnam to give a couple of different updates. The first one, as you know, the commissioners have voted to provide the deed for the Annex Two building and some funds to renovate that building. And that's, you know, knowledge that we have shared with you and the community knows about now. And we will put on our Monday board agenda an opportunity for you all to talk about that in a bigger meeting and decide whether or not you want to accept that offer, which we think is, you know, certainly not what we ask for, but very, very fair and reasonable. And certainly more than the commissioners have been able to provide for us before. So we've been pretty pleased with that. So Dr. Putnam is going to give you an update on some of those details. And then he will transition into the turf agreement bid process. He'll cover a couple of things. Dr. Putnam?
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. Board members, Mr. Chair, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about the possibility, the possibilities that exist with Annex Two becoming the Central Office. We have begun demolition, the top floor, and that is moving along rather rapidly. We've also did exploratory work in, in the way of inspection and things that we will need to do. We've talked to several contractors and have also talked with some architects and engineers, as well as the licensing office or permitting office for the Town of Waynesville, which is the township for which that, that building falls. And we are being advised to create an RFQ to secure a designer. And then, once we have secured a designer, architect, then what we would do is put out for bid with contractors. Obviously, the project will exceed 500,000. And General Statute 83A13 would require the use of a designer or architect, as well as, that's what we're being advised by the permitting office and consult from contractors and architects locally. So that's kind of where we are. We've, we've, as I said, have began, begun demolition on the top floor. It's a two-story building, 7,000 square feet on the top, 7,000 square feet on the bottom, roughly. And we're moving through the top floor pretty good. It had, we have had some inspections, which we will, we'll talk or discuss later. And we've already prepared an RFQ to be put out so that qualified architects, engineers can put in a proposal to us, if you will, for design work. Any questions on Annex Two?
Are we going to be able to complete that work with the money that we're getting from the county, you think? Are we still looking at that? Or are we going to have to come up with more to go with it?
That's a great question. I will tell you, in a best case scenario, it is going to be really, really tight. And as is the case with any old structure, you can reasonably anticipate some things, and there will always be surprises just about every time, if you, if you've dealt with old buildings at all. And so the best I could advise you at this point is it's going to be really tight.
Any other questions for Dr. Putnam? All right.
Okay, you want me to transition to turf at this time?
That would be great.
No, I was, if, if you don't mind, I do have, I do have sort of a follow-up question.
Okay.
We were talking about support. Because we have, our focus got shifted.
Dr. Rogers, you broke up just a little bit. You may need to repeat that. You broke up just a little bit.
Our, you know, our focus, our focus kind of shifted when, when the Annex Twos became a possibility. We began to negotiate with county commissioners. Now, we had talked about some property and, and we really left Dr. Putnam in a, in a, in a bad place where we didn't provide any further direction on blocking between Haywood EMC. So in the big scheme of things, now that we know Central Office is going to go into what was formerly Annex Two, what about, is there any updates from Haywood EMC on that property that we were looking at? Because I don't want us to lose sight of the fact we still want to do some consolidating and we still want to build an educational support.
And Dr. Nolte, you correct me if I'm wrong here, but that, that's a great point in question. And I believe that'll be discussed since it's real property acquisition in closed session. Is that correct, Dr. Nolte?
Yeah, we can talk about that. We did have a really nice statement, I think, from Chairman Inslee at the end of our meeting with the commissioners, that he realized that we still had property that was old and inefficient and that we would need to work on that at some time in the future. And I would just say that we'll, we'll follow up on that conversation. And I think we had a good two years of conversations with the commissioners. And I think they do understand that resolving, if we can get resolved in the next half year or so, the Central Office situation does not resolve all of our real support services needs. And that's something that we'll need to continue to work on. And Dr. Putnam has had many conversations administratively about that. So that's not a ball that we have dropped. And we will continue to work on that and involve you all, especially since property is a matter of the board.
Okay.
Any other questions before we go on to the turf discussion? Okay.
All right, Ms. Jackson, if you will, if you will queue up the transmittal letter for turf replacement. Okay, for those of you who have visual, you're logged in through the computer, and I'll just read it for those that cannot see it. This is a letter from Civil Design Concepts, re Haywood County School Synthetic Turf Replacement, Pisgah and Tuscola High Schools' Certified Bid Tabulation. Pursuant to the receipt and public opening of bids on April 14th, 2020 for the project noted above, and after evaluation of the bid packages and verification of proper licensures for the Haywood County School Synthetic Turf Replacement, we have prepared the attached Certified Bid Tabulation. As you are aware, the bids and bid bonds are good for 180 days from the date of the bid, which takes us out to early October 2020. Once the school system is at a place to make a decision regarding the status of these projects, please let me know and we can discuss the appropriate next steps at that time. And so that's from Patrick Bradshaw at Civil Design Concepts. So he's basically letting us know that the bids are going to be good for 180 days. And that'll take us out to early October 2020. All right, Kim, if you will, if you will queue up the bid tab sheet. I'm very pleased to show you, if you'll look on there, and again, I apologize for those of you who can see it, reading it to you, but I want those who can't see it to hear. We had three bidders, one of which kind of backed out at the end and provided no bid, once he realized the scope of the work. We had AstroTurf Corporation, and we had GeoServices Southeast Incorporated. AstroTurf came in with a bid of $1,040,001. That's $1,040,001. GeoServices Southeast came in with a bid of $2,419,010. So the clear and apparent low bidder is AstroTurf Corp. And that $1,040,001 is significantly under the projected numbers that we discussed in prior work sessions and board meetings. We did not make adjustments to the timing of the turf replacement for the sole purpose of saving money, but it was a significant savings. That $1,040,010 includes all alternates. That includes grading work at Tuscola High School Field with a pad extension for future renovations to the bleachers. It includes chair platforms being redone. It includes fence displacement back to 20 feet in each end zone. It, it includes fence displacement on the sidelines back to 15 feet. And it includes chair platforms at both schools. So it's all the alternates we looked at, all wrapped up in that $1,040,001. Or if you chose the GeoServices Southeast at $2,419,000. It, the only thing it doesn't account for, if you'll remember, we talked about there were two certified agencies, one being the National High School Federation, and one being ASMI, who is another safety authority. They recommended that 20 feet from the interior boundary of play as the suggested. And the National High School Federation recommended 15. So if we went with the higher order, the, the, the greatest call for safety, that being ASMI, at 20 feet, what we could do is, and again, included already is 20 feet out of the interior edge of play in the end zones. That's already in that $1,040,001. But the sidelines cannot be extended 20 feet. So one additional item that we could add, that one, if, if AstroTurf Corp. is the low bidder, and that's the one that's selected, we could add padding to the, down both sidelines at both schools for a total of 100,000. So 50,000 at Pisgah and 50,000 at Tuscola to provide padding on the fence down both sidelines. And then already included in the $1,040,000 is the movement and replacement of the fence back to 20 feet in both end zones, bringing the total project cost to 1.14, 1, 1 point, or 1,000, $1,140,000 approximately for that addition of the fence, the padding to the fence down each sideline at both schools. And then one other additional thing to consider, upon review by DPI, they recommended the addition of a handicap ramp to the Pisgah cheer platform. Tuscola already has one. They recommended it. It's not required, but it was recommended that a handicap access be added to the cheer platform at Pisgah. I do not have an estimate on that work. So I will stop there and let y'all ask whatever questions you may have.
Okay, I have a question. The cheer platform at Pisgah would be like the one at Tuscola. So that, that handicap ramp will be accessible to people in wheelchairs?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
Okay. The, the recommendation by DPI was to add a handicap, handicap ramp to the Pisgah cheer platform, just like the one that already exists at Tuscola.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Because when I went to, when I go to Pisgah Games, it's, I don't, there's not a ramp. So I really like that.
You can't see me. I'm nodding my head.
Oh, you know, I can't be, I'm not, I don't have all the electronic devices. But I do appreciate that very much.
Dr. Putnam, the AstroTurf Corporation is the original installer of both fields, correct?
You are correct. I'm sorry I didn't point that out. That is correct. AstroTurf is the one who installed the, the initial fields.
And then the second, the second thing is do Well, give me a second. It'll circle back around here in a minute. Oh, the total original with, the original, if we would have went ahead and, and was in the process of repla- add on.
You're breaking up pretty bad, but I'm going to restate what I think you said.
Yeah.
Prior to this bid opening and prior to moving the installation back, we were looking at preliminary we were looking at preliminary numbers at, or around 1.7 million.
Okay, so, so even with the additions, and I have no way to estimate what it's going to cost to do the ramp at Pisgah, but we're...
We, it is very safe to say that at least $500,000 cheaper than what we projected, correct? With all alternates.
Well, I know you can't see me right now, but I'm doing a happy dance. Probably best that you don't.
And I'm laughing and smiling.
That's great, that's, this is great news.
Great news, great news. So this bid's good until when? 180 days? Or?
180 days from the bid opening.
April 14th.
Well, my suggestion would be that, you know, we don't wait the 180 days. But we go ahead and begin the, you know, by awarding the bid as soon as possible. We get the ball rolling, and I think the public will be just as happy as we are about that savings and maybe address issues as well.
Yeah, and there has been, just so you know, in regards to that, there've been some questions about, raised about the delay of the project, even, you know, by commissioners and members of the community. But what I, what I've told the commis, what I spoke during the commissioners meeting was this. The real reason for the decision to delay was if we tore the field up May 1st, not knowing at that time, but we chose to go ahead and execute the resurfacing project, there was the potential for high school senior girls who play soccer to return and expect, and rightfully so, to play on their home field, and it would have been torn up at that time. The other thing that we looked at was, okay, well, we'll move it back to June. And then the real quagmire that we got into is, we could potentially have the field tore up when the high school footballs and boy soccer seniors returned. So there was really no good timing with the uncertainty of school that we could do this field replacement prior to December. But Dr. Rogers, you are 100% correct. It is a really, really good deal and a significant savings.
Well, I think we should, you know, I know we don't, we don't take action tonight, but, you know, I would at least discuss this in building and grounds at the board meeting, or at our next building and grounds meeting, and in accordance to their desires, I think we want to push this out and make it public as soon as possible.
Well, if we get...
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Hanson.
If, if we approve, let's say we approve this Monday, are we still looking, trying to get it done now? Or we're still going to wait till next year?
Well, part of the reason we got that bid for that price was the delay to 180 days. See, they have scheduled work more than they, you know, it's a really tight timeline for them. They have scheduled work trying to get all of their customer, current customers' projects completed. So I think the fact that we moved it back for 180 days, looking at December, they said, well, we don't have scheduled work beyond that, and we want to make certain that we do. And so that's why we got the low bid. So I don't, I don't think you can start it earlier off that bid. That was in the addendum, that the work would be scheduled and secured at a later date, beyond 180 days.
Okay, so right now, when are we wanting to start or projecting to start the work? December?
December would probably, probably be best. You know, as we, as we look at athletics, and I really wished I could give you more definitive answers, you just have to look for little clues and cues based on how people react to certain things. And one of those little clues that I picked up on is the North Carolina High School Athletic Association moved the start date for winter sports back two weeks. So usually, in a, in a regular, normal school year, you could start the second week in October, and they moved it back to November 1st, which tells me that they're anticipating the, the, the sports season's being condensed or collapsed or delayed. So I say all that to say this, I think if that's the start of the winter sports season, if November is the start of the winter sports season, December looks like a safe month as far as not interrupting the play of our kids.
If I could add a comment just for those who are streaming in and listening, that is a very well-educated guess by Dr. Putnam. Please do not quote us on when the winter sports season and everything else will start and end, because that's what the High School Athletic Association has said at this point, and we know they can change that, and certainly pandemic situations could alter it. But I think he's made a very good educated guess. But the truth of the matter, when all that occurs, was really yet to be determined by things we don't know. So that's just a disclaimer for those listening in on the live stream. That's not an announcement about sports from us, just very good guessing.
Good job.
Thank you, Dr. Nolte. Yeah, only clues, where we're just trying to figure out the unpredictable. So what I, what I would recommend, Ms. Jackson, if you will pull up the next item, which is a letter of intent, what we could do, if you so choose, not to not, obviously, but for your consideration, maybe for vote on Monday. I have, for those of you who cannot see, it's a letter of intent, re Haywood County School Synthetic Turf Replacement Projects, Pisgah and Tuscola High Schools, Haywood County, North Carolina. It's addressed to Mr. Alexander with AstroTurf. Based upon the receipt and public opening of bids for the aforementioned project on April 14th, 2020, we are pleased to share that AstroTurf Corporation is the apparent low bidder. As I am sure you are, you are aware, Haywood County Schools as owner, as part of the bidding and contract documents required that the bids for this project be held for a period of 180 consecutive days, which falls on October 11th, 2020. That said, Haywood County Schools will make a decision about how to move forward with this project prior to October 11th, 2020. As noted in Addendum Number Two, issued on April 3rd, 2020, bidders were notified that the probable... anticipated to be November 15th, 2020, or as soon thereafter as possible, given each school's football playoff standing at that time. Obviously, with the COVID-19 crisis ongoing, Haywood County Schools is making many decisions as information is made available to us. That said, based on what we know at this time, we have every intention of proceeding with the replacement of both the Pisgah and Tuscola fields later this year. We will certainly keep AstroTurf Corporation in the loop should this scenario change. So basically, it's a letter of intent. I have Pat Smathers, he's not with us today, but he has reviewed this document. It is not legally binding, it's merely a good faith effort to let AstroTurf know that they are the apparent low bidder, should we exercise the option to replace the turf. Any questions for me on the letter of intent?
I think it's a good letter, Dr. Putnam, and I think that the building grounds would definitely be looking and discussing that Monday night at their regular meeting.
Okay, any other questions for Dr. Putnam? Okay, at this time, this is the last item we have, other than general announcements or questions in open session. But what we wanted to do before we went into closed session was give you an update on graduation ceremony plans and the potential dates. And I'm going to roll away from the computer monitor here and let Mrs. Barker roll in and talk to you about those things. Again, this is for your instruction, we would bring this to you on Monday to approve the dates if you so agree.
Chairman Francis and members of the board, good evening. Ms. Jackson, if you want to pull that, the dates as of May 7th for graduation, you could pull that up. Can everyone see that? Okay.
Not yet.
So I'll talk to you while she's getting that up, but just want to let you know, obviously, I wish I was come tonight, not with revised graduation dates, I think everyone feels that way. Our staffs at our high school and our principals, administration have really had some tough decisions, and I know they put a lot of thought in it. I don't think this is how anyone wanted things to turn out, I will say that. With that being said, so much positive in wanting to do the best they can for their kids under the circumstances. So that part, I know they will do a good job. If you'll look at the dates, proposed dates, new dates, you can see Learning Center, that day will be June 1st, 2020 at 4:00 p.m. at HCLC. And their plans are to have a drive-through graduation with balloons, bubble makers, have the kids come through on their car, there will be a few admin teachers. Mr. Haney will confer the diplomas, and that is their, their general plan right now for the HCLC on June 1st at 4:00. Tuscola High School has two dates for, again, a similar drive-through approach. They are taking it hour by hour, so if you'll look on June 2nd, the kids will get to sign up for a time that is convenient for their family from 10 until 11, and then there'll be hour increments from 1 until 7, so there'll be times from 1 to 2, 2 to 3, 3 to 4, and so on, on June 2nd. Same thing on June 3rd, just to get the flexibility, different times, they're looking at like 20 students at a time, likewise with Pisgah, although as of right now, 20 students can't get out of the car. Both schools wanted to be able to have that student and their family be able to be on that campus and a good location where there could be a nice picture made and be able to confer their diploma at that time. Central Haywood High School will do the same, probably in this parking area, possibly in front of the school. I know Mr. Redden was still working on that on June 4th at 5:00 p.m. Pisgah High School, their plan too is to have students, they're going to try to do theirs in one day, from 9 until 4, just their five members of their admin team, and then the student and their family, hopefully, obviously no more than 10 people can be there. There will be a photographer and a video person at both, all these locations. So that doesn't leave many people that can be there, that can get out of the car. So they want to at least get as many family members as they can, up until 10 people. The early college will, you know, their, their graduation will follow the college graduation, and hopefully they'll be able to do that on August 7th at 4:30 at Haywood Community College. And do not know what the plan is after that, if that gathering size is still not allowed. I'm open to any questions you have for me, I have talked to all the principals several times. Mr. Haney's provided me information too, so any questions you have, I'd be glad to answer for you.
Gee, only question? Go ahead.
I'm sorry. So, did you say they would be able to get out of the car?
Their plan... Their plan is, so let's take Pisgah High School, for instance, there's five administrators. There'll be a video and a camera, that's seven people. There'll be a graduate, that's eight, and then two more people, that would be only 10 people there. And I don't want to speak exactly for their location, but I think for Mr. Connor, maybe right there at the bear in front of their sign. So those people would be able to get a picture there, they would have that decorated nicely, confer the diploma. Tuscola would like to do theirs, near where the, not where the band tower is, but with that beautiful mountain view down in the lower end of the parking lot, set something up there, and they'd drive through. So I think they're really trying to follow those guidelines of no more than 10 people and comply, comply with that. So, and then, you know, other people can be there in the car, they just would not be able to get out of the car.
Okay, given, given the newest guidelines that were just announced, you can now gather outdoors more than 10 people.
Our latest guidance, Mr., I don't know, Dr. Rogers, you can tell me. Our latest guidance this morning, talking to superintendents, was for church services. They said outdoor gatherings, but I think the superintendents were in the assumption this morning that that did not apply yet to other venues. But I do want to say, the principals are, if anything changes, you know, they want, they, they are just, they want to be able to change this and open this up. I mean, that is their wish, and you know, they, they have plans that they could change this pretty quickly, you know? So even if it was, they will change it if, anyway, that something like this happens. So they did want you to know that. I'm not sure, Dr. Rogers, and Dr. Nolte's moving over here, so.
Oh, but, oh, but then, it could be opened up more, could it not?
It could be, it could be, and we will adjust accordingly. What we're trying to do is, you know, what we've talked to you all about is, in the past, is think long-term and act short-term, we, what we'd like to do is nail the dates down. I met with the state superintendents and regional superintendents, there's only one school district in the area that is waiting until August, I've spoken with that superintendent personally, know her well. Her public health director tells her they may or may not get to have a more open graduation in August. Certainly, if we have the opportunity to open up and do more in early June, we'll be glad to do it. We are very concerned that if we wait, we will lose students. We had parents of some students communicate to principals that their child was moving, or their child was going to be in the military, and their child would not be here. We feel like we will be able to provide a personal celebration for more students now. And certainly, if we can open up the activities in a safe manner, we'll be glad to do that. I, again, if the rules have changed, since I've talked to them, you know, we'll be glad to open it up some. What I have read and seen is that those exceptions were for, were for church services, if that applies to graduations and other ceremonies, then we would certainly try to access that.
So really, we're, we're just looking at dates right now, not graduation plans.
Well, we, we do have plans, and we have to have those, but we want to change... Well, we, we do have plans and we have to have those, but we want to change our plans. Keith Roden wants to go across the river because we've been told the community college will not be available. And he wants to do it in the football field across the river and have everyone there. And we've told him if the social distancing permits, we'll pat him on the back and join him. And then the other schools want, also want to open it up. We didn't want to promise people that we would do that now, not knowing what it's gonna be like in a month. But certainly we, we will open it up as much as the, the guidelines allow us to.
We're also Ten-four. In our county health director, is he involved in this too as far as, you know, in some of the decision-making? As far as the, the numbers of people on that stuff was what our county thinks about it as well. Like, like Dr. Rogers said, you know, it's opened up some things and like you said, it's for churches. But I think, I think our county can have some say so in that too, as far as our county health department.
I will be glad to talk to Patrick, I will be glad to talk to Patrick Johnson about that. I spoke to him today about inside gatherings. I did not talk to him about graduation. Again, it's a month away and we knew that we would expand it if we, if we could. But I will talk to Patrick about that and provide that information to schools and to the board and, you know, if it's, if it's available to the community. What we don't want to do now and is tell people for sure that we're going to do something in June and not be able to do it because the restrictions get tighter. And it's a whole lot easier, I was told, when I did my student teaching many, many, many years ago, it's easier to loosen up than it is to tighten down. So what we're starting with is what we know we can do under almost any situation. And then we would certainly expand that if the, if the regulations allow us to.
That's very fair. Thank you.
Yep, that's exactly the answer I was looking for.
All right, thank, thank both of you, Mr. Rogers and Dr. Rogers. I'm gonna slide over and if you all have any additional questions for Mrs. Barker, and if you don't, then I'll slide back in and we'll see if there are any other items for open session.
So, thank you, Dr. Nolte. Yeah, and I think everybody, you know, is hoping that we can change. This is definitely would be the tightest we would want this to be at this point. And the principals did want me to convey that to you, that they did want to get some dates also on the calendar. Any other questions for me?
Thank you, Ms. Barker. That's a great update and I love the fact that we're gonna be fluid on this. If this thing opens up, we're gonna open up. I think that's a good idea.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are.
She didn't take her chair with her. I had to push it out of the way, so I didn't give any kind of infection there. So, Mr. Francis, members of the board, are there other questions or comments before we go into closed session? I'll say while you're thinking about that, we do not have anything administratively that we would expect you or ask you to act on in closed session. So if there's any action to report after closed session, that would come from your deliberations or conversations, but we're not anticipating any of that. And I say that upfront because if there is no action, we could, we'll come out and close the session and people who are streaming in would not have to sit there and wait on us.
Dr. Nolte, I don't have any questions. I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I was impressed and I want to thank you for how gracious you was to the county commissioners about, you know, our, about the annex. And so I think you handled that really well. And so I just think it, kudos to you for how you handled that situation and letting them know that, given the circumstances, that it was definitely something that you appreciated. So I think that was well-handled.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Burnett. Dr. Putnam and I were both sincere in our, in our comments to the commissioners and to the public. That meeting was also being streamed. The contract from 1980, lease contract from 1980 was, I'm sure, great early on, but many boards of commissioners and of education have worked on it through the year. And while it does not solve all of our problems or get us to a place we need to be, we were very appreciative to have a good working relationship with the commissioners and we were able to come up with what we came up with. That's something that had not happened before on this particular situation for many years. So we worked cooperatively together, we had lots of hard conversations. Mr. Francis can tell you, he was in those. And while it certainly did not take care of all of our needs, it did take care of a portion of those and we wanted to express that thanks for that portion to the commissioners publicly.
Well, I think, I think Becky Johnson did a good job in the paper of laying the situation out and, you know, showing that you and the school system was gracious, however, that there were some, obviously some shortcomings to the long-term plan.
Yeah. If I could add a comment there as well in favor of all of you and your decision-making. One of the things that I think was brilliant that you did was lay out, lay out your plan, your wants, your needs so that they're out there for everybody's consideration. And, you know, anything short of that, people were clear where, what it was you envisioned for the school system. So I thought that was a brilliant move on all of your parts.
Thank you. The, the good news is that we've got a dialogue now and they know our needs, like you say, Dr. Putnam. So I think, I concur with that and I did talk to Chairman Insley later that evening after the county commissioners did what they did. And I just thanked him for working with us, but he also does understand there's further needs. And so, any other comments?
I would say, Mr. Francis, if someone does not have the closed session link, if they'll text me, we'll get it to them.
Okay. I guess on this one, we need to go ahead and do a, a motion in a second to go into closed session. At this time, we entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
I make a motion.
Okay, we have a, we'll let, Mr. Burnett has made a motion, seconded by Ms. Barrett. It's been suggested that we also vote by actual polling. So is there any question or discussion on a motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. I'm gonna roll call it, okay? Mr. Clark, yea or nay?
Yea.
Okay, Mr. Francis?
Yea.
Mr. Kirkpatrick?
Yea.
Mr. Henson?
Yea.
Dr. Rogers?
Yea.
Mr. Rogers?
Yea.
Okay, Mr. Burnett?
Yea.
Ms. Barrett?
Yea.
Okay, motion carries unanimously.